City Council, Mr. Hamp, you lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll remind everyone here tonight, if you're going to speak at Citizens Comment or Public Hearing, your sign-up sheets in the back of the room. Also, which one is that item? The item that we were going to talk about tonight to discuss about the chicken population in our town, that's going to be pulled from the agenda. We'll bring it up at a future meeting. We, Council, cross-feel like we don't have enough information, that there's some more statistics we need to find out about. We need to look into the law as it is. It's something that we realize we have had some complaints about, so we're not ignoring it, but we will look into it deeper and come back with probably, I think, a little bit better recommendation as something that we can control the problem with without being to the point of what we were looking at. So if everybody's good with that, we'll pull that off tonight. First item of business is the consent agenda. Is our motion to adopt as presented?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed, carries 5-0. Does anybody have anything from Council members that they'd like to present tonight? Mr. Marks?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, on this date, sixty-six years ago, a certain future mayor was caused to emerge into this veil of tears. Join with me and wish our mayor a happy birthday.
Well, thank you, Mr. Marks. Happy birthday. Hopefully, after the meeting tonight, I might get a chance to celebrate someone on my birthday. Thank you.
I've just got a couple of things. Wanted to just thank staff, particularly the Parks and Rec staff, for just an awesome week in Waynesboro. The first was the Groovin' on the Greenway event along the, with the new pavilion, temporary pavilion down by the Greenway. It was awesome. The weather was great and the music was great and the food trucks, sure. The next was the Extreme Fest and the Fun Run. So my soon-to-be sixth grader participated in the Fun Run, and it was muddy and amazing. Over 500 kids registered, literally thousands of people at Ridgeview. It was awesome. I mentioned that Ms. Anderson and I, we attended the NAACP Gala function on Friday evening, and it was equally awesome, along with Ms. Manville and the police chief also were in attendance. Appreciated all the work that they do and the Freedom Fund, and, but, just an exceptional event, amazing music. And then, also, I'd be remiss not to mention that my family's going on vacation here at the end of the month, and so this will actually be my last meeting for the month of June. And I didn't want the moment to pass to at least share my appreciation for serving with Mr. Marks and Mr. Freeman over these past two years. Appreciate their leadership and their commitment and service to our community, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Item four is to conduct a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance adopting a code chapter procurement of the city code for the city of Waynesboro, Virginia. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, happy birthday, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
The Code of Virginia prescribes standards that state agencies and localities must follow in the procurement of goods and services. To be clear, the city of Waynesboro adheres to these standards. The city code, however, is generally silent on the matter of purchasing and procurement. And consequently, there are specific provisions of the Virginia Public Procurement Act that are not available to the city. Additionally, in the absence of explicit codified standards, the city may face an increased exposure to complaint or challenge from prospective vendors. So the city staff and legal counsel are recommending that this purchasing and procurement ordinance be included in the city code. And the primary provisions of the code, one, enumerate the legislative purpose of the procurement ordinance, and they are one to provide an increased public confidence in the procedures followed in public procurement, to ensure the fair and equitable treatment of all persons who deal with the procurement system of the city, to provide increased economy in the city procurement of activities, and maximize to the fullest extent practicable the purchasing value of public funds of the city, to foster an effective broad-based competition within the free enterprise system, to provide safeguards for the maintenance of a procurement system of quality and integrity, and finally, to promote uniformity of procurement policies and procedures among the various departments, offices, and agencies of the city. This act would apply to all of the city agencies, including constitutional offices, except for the school board, and, who are explicitly exempted from this code. They're not exempted from the Virginia Public Procurement Act. And essentially, what this act would do then would delegate authority to the city manager to develop written policies, and we're crafting a draft of those policies now. They generally mirror provisions of the Virginia Public Procurement Act that we currently follow, but they are more detailed and directive than the ordinance that is presented to council. And this is not unlike other ordinances of the city, where the council may adopt, for instance, standards for the regulation of personnel and human resources, but then direct the city manager to develop more explicit policies related to personnel management. And so then, also, there's some explicit language relative to small purchases. And this is an area particularly where currently, any purchase of, the purchases of the city typically go through a, an RFP process, either a request for proposals or an invitation for bid. And the, that's a generally a time-consuming, fairly detailed process to both develop standards for the purchase and then go through an advertising period for that purchase and a selection process. The Virginia Code, Virginia Public Procurement Act, would allow that you can go through a more expedited process, and that you still have to get bids, you have to get bids from three qualifying vendors, and have a fair and equitable selection process, but it allows that for smaller purchases, that things can be expedited. So for instance, I know as we've worked on some of the NERTA work, that there are times when we really need to turn around some sort of drawings because we're going to visit our legislatures or administrative people at the state. And we're really not able to do that in the current environment, that we are essentially required to either work with vendors we have on-call or to go through a full-blown procurement process. So that would be an example, where the Procurement Act basically says that localities can do that sort of thing with small purchases, but that the ordinance has to be in place, that there has to be provision allowing the locality to do that in writing, which implies that the council has to adopt the ordinance. So unless there are questions from council, that's essentially what I have.
Any questions? All right, and I'll hereby open the public hearing.
So, Mr. Mayor, our public hearing sign-up sheet for this item has gone missing. I don't know if that, somebody's trying to co-opt all the time or squelch public discussion, but I might invite anybody who wishes to speak on this item to raise their hand.
There's probably good reason it went missing, then, so I'll hereby close the public hearing. Are there any other questions or comments from City Council? If not, is there a motion to introduce? Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Item five is upon application by Philip and Mary Ellen Lemons to conduct a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance rezoning tax map parcel numbers forty-four dash four dash twenty-seven dash twenty-seven and twenty-eight and twenty-nine, a street address of 412 Cedar Avenue from mixed residential to local business. Mr. Judee?
Thank you, Mayor Allen. Members of council, happy birthday.
Thank you.
This property's at 412 Cedar Avenue, which is a short road that intersects at an angle with Rossar Avenue. Many of you probably have noticed the Black Hawk sign out there if you've driven down Rossar Avenue. It currently holds a single-family house. This land, just to the north of it, along Rossar's vacant, and then there's one more single-family house right next to it, and then an apartment complex. Whittle Service is right over here, and there's another single-family house there and an office complex. So it's kind of a mixed area in terms of what is out there along Rossar. The proposed, the applicant today would like to rezone the property from its current designation of RMX, which is mixed residential, to LB, local business. This is an upzoning, so our zones are classified by most intense use down to least intense use, and so they'd like to go from a less to a more intense zone, but it's probably the shortest jump in the zoning code from RMX to LB in terms of going up. RMX allows you to do a variety of residential uses, medium to high density, you could build apartments there. It also allows some non-residential commercial uses, so there's a few kind of limited things that you can build there that would be commercial. LB is a local business district, and so it's meant to be primarily commercial uses, but they're small scale, so you can't build like a service station or a big box store or something in LB. It's meant for smaller-scale commercial uses that would fit into a neighborhood context a little bit better. And it also allows some residential uses. So again, there's, you kind of have to look at the code to see the exact distinction between them, but it's not a very big jump. The main driver, though, is that we don't allow in RMX hair salons, and they currently have a tenant who would like to open a hair salon, a personal care business, in the building. Here's our official zoning district map. The area where the property's located is here. You can see, this area's a fairly mixed zone. We have a lot of, called RO, residential office, which allows for certain kinds of very non-invasive commercial uses, and also some local business zoning. Our current LB zones are located around downtown mostly, and then on Commerce Avenue and out on East Main Street. Staff doesn't feel this will have a significant impact to the properties around it. Given the kind of situation and the location of it, it's already not an optimal place for a single-family home, and it's, you can see, it's already being used as an office. So we think that the move from office to hair salon is not that significant, and none of the things that they would be allowed to build in local business would be that significant an impact to the neighborhood. They already have excellent access, they have alley access, they already have a paved parking lot behind the house. Utilities are in place. It's a highly visible location, very much exposed to Rossar Avenue, so it's really more along a corridor than it is a local street. The Planning Commission recommended approval on a 5-0 vote with the following conditions, which were proposed by staff. First, that the following use in the LB district shall not be allowed, all commercial parking, basically, you can't put a commercial parking lot there, which would be allowed in the LB zone where you charge people to park. I can't think of any reason why that would be marketable in that zone, but it was just something that we thought was not appropriate in that specific location, so we proffered out. And then, secondly, that two street trees should be planted along Cedar Avenue. In most of our rezonings, we've taken the opportunity to try to get more street trees along our main corridors. That's why that was put in. Any questions about the rezoning?
Are these zonings grandfathered in?
No, there's no grandfathering issue with this particular property.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Judee.
No problem.
I'll hereby open the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak.
Then I'll hereby close the public hearing. Any other questions, comments? If not, is there a motion to introduce? Thank you, Mr. Marks. Item six is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance amending the subdivision and zoning chapters of the city code. Mr. Judee?
Thank you, Mayor Allen. You may remember last year that we proposed from staff, sort of a package of zoning text amendments, to clean up various issues that we had stumbled into in our applications. We have a couple more of those, as well as a couple fixes to our recently amended subdivision ordinance. Unlike last time, you might remember, I've actually advertised these all separately, so you can vote on them separately if you would like. But our lawyers have said that it's fine if we get to the end of this and you just want to introduce one motion and hold one public hearing on them. But if you would like to amend or pull one of them, you can do so, unlike last time when I made you take them all or leave them. So I'll start with the zoning text amendments, and just as a quick refresher on what criteria the zoning code lays out for zoning text amendments. Requires the Planning Commission and the City Council to consider the following six criteria for any proposed amendment. First, whether such amendment is consistent with good zoning practice. Secondly, whether public necessity, convenience, and general welfare, to the extent such factors are pertinent to the subject matter. Third, the extent to which the proposed text amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the remainder of the chapter, including specifically the purpose and intent statements. Fourth, the extent to which the proposed text amendment represents a new idea not considered in the existing ordinance, or represents a revision necessitated by changing circumstances over time. We have one that would specifically fall under this. Fifth, whether or not the proposed text amendment corrects an error in the chapter. And then, sixth, whether or not the proposed text amendment revises the chapter to comply with state or federal statutes. The first text amendment being proposed by staff today is allowing schools in commercial zones by right. Currently, we only allow educational uses, schools, and residential zones. This doesn't make a whole lot of sense to us as staff because the impacts and the kind of general nuisance created by a school fits fairly well into a commercial zone as well, and we don't think takes away from a commercial zone. In fact, I think it can contribute to it. And many of the properties that are available and easily used by schools are already in kind of commercially-zoned districts. And if you look at our zoning map, where our current, our newest schools are, they're largely along corridors that would obviously have been zoned commercial, but they were changed to residential to allow a school there. We feel that that's not particularly necessary. I don't know that there's any justification for keeping schools out of the commercial zones. At one point, there might have been a concern about ensuring that we had the highest and best use in terms of property tax value out of them, but as I think we already have probably more commercial zoning than we have demand for, I don't think it's a bad thing if a school wanted to use a building in that context. And we've had a couple of issues recently with the renovation of the high school, expanding classrooms, and then also the Blue Ridge, potential Blue Ridge Distance Learning Center, where, you know, they want to look at a building downtown, and, well, actually, we don't allow a school in a commercial zone. So we propose to allow them in any zone except for industrial zones. So that's the first zoning text amendment. Do you all want to comment on these as we go, or ask questions?
Anybody got any questions about that?
The second zoning text amendment is requiring homes to face the street. I've pulled an example from an unnamed neighboring locality. But it would require all single-family homes and duplexes to have a primary facade and entrance parallel to the street from which the front setback is marked. We already have provisions in our zoning code for determining where the front of the house is, where the rear and the side yards are, and there's separate, you know, setbacks for each one. And this used to be an older ordinance that the city had, and just kind of fell out over time, I suppose, but it just, this one is more a matter of opinion, I think, for you all, but we feel that requiring homes to face the street ensures that you keep a consistent street wall and a consistent sort of sense of public space along the street versus having kind of side yards facing out. It also makes it a lot easier when you're dealing with issues like somebody wants to add a porch, but where they think the backyard is, is actually the side yard, and the side yard is a different setback and that type of thing. So that's the second text amendment. Any questions on that?
Good question.
This is kind of an example of what you could avoid with that, is, you know, if somebody wants to flip a duplex on its side and face it the other way. The third text amendment is to allow all vehicle sales and service in the heavy industrial district. The code makes the distinction between certain full-service vehicle uses and lighter uses, so things like body shops, towing services, and full-vehicle service were currently only allowed in our light industrial district. It's fairly restrictive, very heavily restricted use in the code. As you know, we have a lot of auto-related uses out on, for instance, East Main Street, some other parts of the city that are grandfathered in, and that over time, you sometimes see a conditional use permit for them, or you see somebody coming in and wanting to try to do something to it, and they're not, really not supposed to be there, and so then they look around the city and they say, well, where could we move to? And we have a very limited number of places that they could move to, and so we're trying to expand the amount of possible locations that they could go to. We feel that since heavy industrial district is the highest zone on the hierarchy, it's meant to be the zone that accommodates the most noxious impacts, and sort of auto-related vehicle service uses are the most noxious types of uses that we tend to have in the city now, that there's no reason why we shouldn't allow them in the heavy industrial district. Again, back to the school issue, when you're thinking about why wouldn't you do this, the only real reason I can come up with is that, you know, you would want to reserve that land for higher-value uses, but again, we have more heavy industrial land than we can reasonably market at the moment, and so it doesn't seem like a problem to us if a towing company wanted to use a piece of heavy industrial property that, you know, why that shouldn't be allowed to us. Obviously, we have some industrial land, like our industrial park, that we would like to go to high-value uses, but, you know, you're already pricing these folks out. It's not, you know, it's not like they're going to come in and take it and force it to be lower value. So that's our thought there, just to try to present, give them more options, and also give more options to our heavy industrial property owners, to things they can do with the property.
Any questions?
All right. The fourth zoning text amendment is to add solar farms to the zoning code. We've had two, specifically two inquiries over the last year, fairly serious inquiries, about constructing a solar farm in the city, and we don't have anything in the code to address it, and so we haven't known necessarily what to tell them as far as where they would be allowed to put it or not. And neither of those ended up getting very far, but we wanted to go ahead and preemptively add it to the zoning code in case something like that comes up again. So this text amendment would add solar farms to the use table. It would make them a by-right use in the light industrial and heavy industrial district, and then allow them by conditional use permit in all other districts. So it would basically treat them like a cell tower, you know? On the one hand, there's, we didn't see any reason to require anything in the industrial districts, but you, you know, a solar farm is tend to, going to tend to be in a, an undeveloped area, more on the fringe of the city, so it's probably zoned for a very low-density residential. And so, you know, we didn't want to ban them there, but then in that context is also when you would want to be the most careful about impacts that could have on the surrounding property. So again, kind of like a cell tower, we said that we would allow them by conditional use permit in those areas, treat them as a utility. And then to go along with this, we had to add a definition of solar farm. The definition that we came up with was "a utility-scale photovoltaic installation generating electricity for off-site use. Solar panels that are auxiliary to another use and which generate power primarily for on, use onsite are not considered solar farms and are allowed in all zoning districts." So we just wanted to clarify in the definition that if you want to put solar panels on your roof, you're allowed to do that, that's not a solar farm. We're talking about a utility-scale development that's for selling electricity off-site. Anything onsite is not, not banned, so. Any questions about that amendment?
Move on.
Okay. We have now two amendments to the subdivision ordinance. As you all are aware, we just passed the new subdivision ordinance, so sorry we're coming back to you with corrections so quickly. But we have, first of all, an amendment to allow council to waive provisions of the subdivision ordinance. You may recall that this was already present in our previous ordinance. The previous legal opinion we received was that this was already authorized by the Virginia Code and it didn't need to be in the ordinance, this provision, and that it was actually redundant, and so we just didn't want to put it in to create the expectation. Our current legal advice is that actually, we are not authorized to waive the subdivision ordinance unless this clause is in the chapter, so we are putting it back in. So we're reinserting the waiver clause, which allows City Council to waive sections of the subdivision ordinance if, first, a waiver or variation of any provision of this chapter best satisfies the overall purposes set forth in Section 74-2, or an applicant has shown that the requirement being waived or varied would cause a substantial injustice or hardship. So if somebody's subdividing a property and there's some, some quirk about their property that makes following our ordinance result in a real hardship for them, then you would have the authority to waive it. Or, as we did in Claybrook, I remember when they wanted to put the E1 pumps in rather than build a pump station, and that's a situation where that better fulfilled, you know, the intent of the ordinance and was better for us and better for them, gives you authority to, in that case, waive our requirement and come to a better conclusion. That's that. Questions on that? And then, our second subdivision ordinance amendment is guidelines for phased developments. I don't know if any of you watch Arrested Development, but this is the model home from the subdivision which never, never seemed to get built. But Michael says in that, or I think it's Jobe, says, "How am I supposed to sell all these houses if it doesn't have any roads or parks or schools? We never built any of that." So this is about phased developments. Currently, phasing is a gray area that's not addressed by the code. Phasing is increasingly necessary in the current market. We have a situation now where banks are much tighter with financing after the recession, and so most of our developers only build a dozen homes at a time, sell those homes, and then get a loan for another dozen homes. So they might have a subdivision, a preliminary plat approval for 150 homes somewhere, but they're only building, able to build a certain number of those at a time, and, you know, the appropriate roads to go with them. And so that's where we have a lot of our subdivisions that are being built out slowly. Phasing can be open to abuse without a clear section of the code, empowering staff to approve the demarcation of phases, however. Currently, we kind of work it out with the developers, and sometimes a preliminary plat will have a phasing plan in it, but that's almost always subject to change immediately. You know, they'll, the next year, come back and say, actually, townhomes are selling better than the single-family homes, we'd like to do that section first, or we were going to build 20 homes in the first phase, we only have financing for 10, we want to just build the 10. So that changes frequently. And that opens us up then to potential abuses because you have public improvements that you have to build with the subdivision. And so if you try to backload too many of those public improvements to the end, the last phase, you can reach a situation where you've built 80% of your homes, and it's not profitable to actually finish all the public improvements you promised in that last phase, and so the last phase never gets built. An extreme example of this, I believe, happened in Augusta County with a large subdivision that had a, supposed to have amenities like a tennis court and pool, you know, associated with it, and, you know, 90% of the homes get built, and the tennis courts still aren't there, and then at some point, it just doesn't become profitable to build the last 10 homes because you have to build the tennis court, too, and so they just bail out. And I think that was settled in a private lawsuit, I think Jim was telling me about that. We, we have generally a great development community, don't have any extreme examples like that, but we do have disagreements frequently about road connections especially, about, often developers will want to build, they'll start from one end and be building their houses, and you get to where, you know, they built 100 houses, and there's still just one connection, you know? And part of the subdivision ordinance, part of its intent, is to ensure that when you have a lot of, a larger area of the city being built, that there are multiple roads in and out, that it contributes to the street network, that it's easily accessible to fire or residents in the case of emergency. And so often, they will want to keep building in a certain way so that, you know, the last road connection never gets built. Maybe the last road connection is a culvert or a bridge over a creek that's kind of expensive to get to, and so that one, you get, you get there, and it just never makes sense to finish that. And so, as staff, we just need some authority to say, okay, you can continue building the next phase, but at this point, you know, with this many homes, you need to finish this intersection, or you need to go ahead and build the light at that point. And generally, they are fine with that as it is, but it's just not clear in the code that we have the authority to do that. So here's the proposed ordinance amendment. Subdivision should be submitted with a phasing plan. Public improvement plans for phased subdivisions shall designate which public improvements will be constructed as part of each phase. You need to say, you know, this road, this little bridge will happen with this phase of houses. At the request of the applicant and for good cause shown, the subdivision agent, that's me, may approve changes to the phasing of public improvements, provided that any such change shall not materially delay the completion of road or utility connections, or the construction of major public improvements that serve prior constructed phases of the subdivision. So if you have, like I said, you're up to 100 houses and you want to build 20 more, at some point, we can trigger and say, well, you need a second entrance, or you need, you need to finish this little section of the pocket park that you were supposed to come with this subdivision. And then, for phased subdivisions, street and utility capacity and connectivity for each phase shall provide an acceptable level of service to the initial phases of the subdivision. The city engineer or his designee may require a traffic impact analysis for one or more phases. It's may, not must, so. Basically, as we officially now clarify that we do allow you to phase a subdivision, and we clarify that to, you can modify that fairly easily with working with staff, but that in the end, the city has the authority to say which public improvements need to go with which phase. say which public improvements need to go with which phase. Questions on this one? A little more complicated.
Over the years, I've heard, like, a performance bond, I think that's what it's called, that developers would put up. Is that something that we don't normally do anymore? Or is that just for the infrastructure, or what?
No, that's, that's something we always do, a performance bond, or you have to either build the improvements or bond them. The issue is, what are you bonding? So if, if you're building half of a subdivision, you're only going to build and bond the roads for that half of the subdivision. And so, it's a question of, which roads do we let you count as part of that half? You know, is this main road going through to this connector, does that need to be part of that half or not? We don't require you to bond, you know, future work that's intended for future phases, no.
So if it was a development of 100 homes, and they just want to phase in the first 50, wouldn't it be a safety net where you'd say, "Well, you know, we'll, we'll bond the completion of the road. You don't have to develop..."
Bond the rest of all of them. It would be a safety net for us, certainly. I mean, we could, we could require that.
Hardship on the developer.
It'd be a pretty big hardship on the developers to get that kind of financing.
Okay.
And that kind of credit, credit line, yeah. Yeah. Because they, they can't usually get that much credit at once, unless they're big boys.
All right. Any other questions?
Just one, one change of, if we could change the city engineer or their designee may require.
I'm fine with that.
Because it could be a female in the future.
It's true. In fact, our previous city engineer was a female.
No, no, he's pointing out it's gender-specific.
His or her.
His or her.
His or her.
His or her. I know it's semantics, but, but my daughter could be an engineer one day, so.
Yeah, true. All right. We can amend that. All right. Any other questions on phased developments?
Move on.
That's it. Planning Commission recommends passage of all four zoning text amendments and both subdivision ordinance on a 5-0 vote.
Any other questions or comments before we go to the public hearing? All right. Open the public hearing?
No one has signed up to speak.
And I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion to introduce these all in one lump? Motion? Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Item 7 is hold a public hearing to receive public comment on a proposed ordinance granting a lease to T-Mobile Northeast LLC to lease space on the tower located on the real property located at 300 Parker Heights Road, Waynesboro, Virginia, with the city accepting bids for lease rights on or before noon on June 11, 2018. Mr. Hamp?
Mayor Allen and members of council, the city obviously owns real property and the cell tower located at 300 Parker Heights Road. Presently, there are two mobile carriers leasing space on that tower. We've been approached by T-Mobile, who seeks and has made application to lease space as well. Working with T-Mobile, we've negotiated or established a proposed lease that is consistent with the terms that exist with the existing carrier. There is one outstanding matter which may alter the planned course or process, and that is, a rigorous structural analysis must be completed by all carriers under our ordinance. That is simply to determine that there is adequate structural capacity to carry the additional load brought by the new equipment for the new carrier. If the study indicates that there is sufficient weight-bearing capacity for the additional carrier, the carrier simply locates on the tower. If, however, that study indicates that there is insufficient weight-bearing capacity, the prospective carrier must engineer and construct an improvement to the tower prior to installing their equipment. Their current study is in conflict with previous studies conducted, and the city is working with T-Mobile, or T-Mobile's representative, to clarify and resolve that discrepancy. And that might have some impact on the lease. If, in fact, that is the case, and it impacts the lease, I'll bring those changes or proposed changes to you at the second consideration. Again, just to emphasize, these terms are consistent with those that are established with the two current carriers. The initial lease is $1,750 per month with a 5% annual escalator. Initial term is for five years. Tonight, we're asked to, you are asked simply to conduct a public hearing and introduce the ordinance if you're comfortable doing so.
Any questions of Mr. Hamp? I'll hereby open the public hearing.
Mr. Jim Ajab is present as a representative of AMP, who is representing T-Mobile.
If you'll give us your name and...
Yes. Jim Ajab, 519 Stone Mill Drive, Cartersville, Georgia. Did I talk too fast?
No.
Okay. I'm with AMP Communications. We work directly for T-Mobile. We're a site development and construction management firm contracted directly by T-Mobile to perform site development services and construction management services here in Virginia. We identified the tower that you had mentioned, Mr. Mayor, located, I'm sorry, you didn't mention it. I'm sorry, Michael did, on, on Parker Heights Road. And we're just looking to co-locate, just like the other two carriers that are currently on the tower.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? Like, we know a lot about the towers, so...
I bet.
How tall is it?
I want to say it's 150 feet, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't know.
Over 100.
Let me get easier questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No other speakers signed up.
I'll close the public hearing. Any other questions or comments from council members? Anyone want to make the motion to introduce?
Some.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you.
Way to make is to receive a presentation from Dr. Camille Miller, President of the Virginia Group, regarding a 10-year strategic plan for career and technical education for the Waynesboro-Stanton Augusta County region. Mr. Hamp, do you want to put anything out before she starts?
Nope. I think if you'll keep in mind the agenda briefing cover, we can go straight to Dr. Miller.
All right.
Mayor Allen, members of council, thank you very much. First of all, I want to commend the format that you have as council of staff reports. Mr. Hitchens was kind enough to share it with me. And I have to say, I do a lot of work with different members of councils and boards of supervisors. It's clear, in a way, one of the best I've seen. I love the form, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Do you mind setting the timer for eight minutes?
I will do that.
I've been asked if I can keep this under eight. And the good news is, my PowerPoint presentation failed, so I think I can do it in less than eight with no problem. We got here because area employers in Waynesboro-Stanton and Augusta continually said to economic developers during their calls that they are struggling to find skilled workforce. And it's keeping them from expanding, it's keeping them from growing to their full potential. And they ask that, in fact, career and technical education be examined as part of the root cause, although not the whole piece. And so, we set out to look at career and technical education in the individual schools, and then collectively, with the idea that while student education is really important, if you look at it in terms of student education as a definite link to your economic prosperity and your economic future, it has a critical role. And so with that, we undertook. To summarize the findings quickly, you have really stellar faculty, you have engaged students, you have a lot of really good things happening. But the programs are uneven and rigor, they're fragmented, and they're generally disconnected from broad educational understanding, and in some cases, from workforce skills. Where you'll have a class that, it's a great class, it could be useful later in life, but it has no direct correlation with what's happening in workforce. We have considerable equipment that is in the schools that is not even close to being current. In, in some cases, you could even call it antiquated. There's one lathe that was donated to the school system in 1940. And the area employers have said that it's not teaching anything near the standards that the students need. You have newer equipment that's unavailable for training purposes, that in fact should be available to them, things such as handheld plasma cutters, which is used in machine fabrication. That's a standard piece of equipment. Consumable materials are, for hands-on use, are costly, and therefore, they're not always available. And so you have situations in the same areas where one set of students is learning rocketry using 3D printers, and another set of students are learning rocketry and the physics of propulsion on two-liter soda bottles. So that kind of unevenness. Valley Career and Technical Center is a marvelous, marvelous facility. And I commend all of the regional jurisdictions for having the foresight to band together for that. But the building is aging. And it hasn't been aging with a careful capital replacement plan. The infrastructure, for example, the electrical was installed long before anyone considered the possibilities of the age of computers and the age of CNCs and programmable laser cutters. So the, the electrical system frequently fails the school and hinders education. You have in front of you the plan that has been presented to the superintendent. It has six goals, 12 objectives, and 79 proposed strategies. And I would tell you, in the more than 20 years that I have been doing this...
Dr. Miller, excuse me for one minute. Would you please pull that microphone down a little bit and stand in the center, because the camera's focused on you. And if you get away from that, and I know how you like to walk around from your presentation the other, the other week, but the people at home won't be able to hear you or see you.
Thank you for that, because you're right. I do tend to move away from this. In the 20-some-odd years I've been doing this, I've done a lot of strategic plan facilitation. I have never once, not once, had a plan that ended up in a word, which was simply uplift, which immediately people took to mean uplift workforce development through career and technical education. And it stands for, the first piece of it is to unify the disconnected elements. You have students who don't know what current technical education is. You have students who may take a semester of career and technical and not know what it requires to become a completer or a finisher, which actually brings certificates and credentials with it. You have students who don't understand that they can do both the governor's school and Valley and Career Technical for career and technical education. So unifying the disconnected elements, which is for the students, for the counselors, and for the teachers. Second is to promote the programs, to really get the word out on what you have available for you right now. With the profile of the Virginia graduate, and the Department of Education and Department of Labor's emphasis on the 16 career clusters, you are really well-positioned to establish your students as individuals who could have great and successful careers in front of them. The third is to leverage and engage employers. Area employers in the surveys and in the focus groups that we did, and on the telephone calls I had, said that they are willing to contribute to career and technical education. But they are not willing to contribute when we're not clear on what it's going to be used for. For example, you have one in business that said that they would, in fact, buy a CNC machine for Valley Career and Technical. But they're not interested in buying four. And so when you start having duplicate programs in the individual school systems with Valley Career Technical, they're saying, "If you're not clear on what you're doing, we're not doing multiple." But they will give money, and that could be leveraged, to actually take some of the burden off your taxpayers and to maximize what you can do with other money. The third would be to innovate. And innovate would include, it's a number of recommendations in there. But it may include, for example, moving your Valley Career Technical to a summer school program as well. I met with students there who said that they would go through summer school, because they're not doing anything else, jobs are hard to come by, and they would really love to learn the skills that are available to them. Another would be to use Valley Career and Technical as a summer school for middle school, because employers who are looking as prospects now for areas to locate are saying, "We don't want you to see your high school and your college career and technical. What are you doing with middle? Because if that's not in the pipeline, you won't be ready for us." Another one, and this is, I'm the only one who thinks this is a good idea right now. I'm promoting it. North Carolina has a science and math school that is the statewide school. I really think that you have the opportunity to locate some kind of a residential piece between Valley Career Technical and Wilson Workforce Center in those buildings, which really do need to come down because of asbestos issues. And there may be some grants for that. I have two minutes. Formalized equipment and facilities upgrade planning. I know that Augusta County commissioned an engineering study for how to revamp the building. And I think that is critical. What you need is a capital replacement plan for the building. For example, your diesel bay no longer holds the size diesel equipment that we're working on now to have enough in there for students to work on. Upgrade the electrical, but then also a capital equipment replacement plan, because technology is changing so quickly that if you're not planning to upgrade technology every three to five years, your students are already graduating with antiquated skills. And then finally, in the uplift, again, just to trumpet your success, once you have a baseline, and then you have new levels of achievement, is to get that information out to the economic developers. And by way of a quick example, currently, 98% of your students in Waynesboro-Stanton and Augusta are graduating with a credential called WISE, which is Working in Supportive Education. It's an assessment of financial literacy. It is cheap, $10 a person. 98% of your students pass on the first time out. That's nice. Not one employer recognizes that credential as having any value. When, on the other hand, for free, you could put your students through Microsoft programming, keyboarding in eighth grade, move them into Microsoft products in ninth grade, and certify them as Microsoft Academy certified, for no money whatsoever for a certificate that every one of your employers recognizes in the region. So this plan has been given to your superintendents. They have, have time to review it, talk about it, and plan for it. You can probably expect to see some things coming up for you in the future. But I think you have a wonderfully bright future ahead of you if you accept those challenges. And I made it in under eight minutes, Mr. Hamp.
Thank you.
And happy birthday.
Fantastic, Dr. Miller.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions or comments in reference to any of that?
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Item 9 is to consider approving an application from Mr. Terry Short, Jr., to close a portion of Lumos Plaza, allow amplified sound, and to serve and consume alcohol beverages on city property during the Virginia Chili Blues and Brews Festival on Saturday, September 22, 2018. Mr. Hamp?
I think the application speaks for itself.
Well, I'd just like to say that in the years since Vice Mayor Short has taken that project over and ran it, it has done nothing but grow and continued to be better. And, you know, the proof is in the pudding. The funds that you've raised, and what you've been able to put back into our community, has been fantastic. I know each time after we have one, I'll talk usually to the chief, see if we've had any problems. And considering the crowd, and the amount of people, and the refreshments that are served, we've been very fortunate. But, you know, once again, would praise our police department, and the reserve force, and the regular people down there. I know it's a long day for them, but we've seemed to do well. And I would say, you got my vote. But is there any questions or anything that anybody would like to ask?
I would second that.
All right, then. So you make the motion.
There you go.
All right, then we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Or is there any other discussion?
I'll, as, as, as the president of the Waynesboro Arts and Culture Initiative, I will respectfully abstain from the motion.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Abstained.
Carrie's 4-0, and we have one person to abstain. Thank you. Item 9B is to consider approving an application from Summit Square to close a portion of Oak Avenue and to serve alcohol beverage in association with an anniversary event. Mr. Hamp?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this anniversary event is, in fact, a celebration of Summit Square's 20th anniversary. It will take place this Friday, June 15, from approximately 4:30 PM until, into the latter part of the evening. They anticipate that takedown of the tent will occur Friday evening, but it may present into mid-morning on Saturday. The request is to close that block of Oak Avenue in front of the Summit Square facility, and then also authorization to serve and consume... and then also authorization to serve and consume alcohol beverage in accordance with ABC license and regulation on public property.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. Is there any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries 5-0. Item 10 is to consider reappointing a member to the Shenandoah Valley Partnership for a two-year term ending June the 30th, 2020. Mr. Hamp?
Mr. Greg Hitchens, our Director of Economic Development, is presented for your consideration.
Is there any questions? Is there a motion to make the appointment?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries 5-0. Item 10B is to consider reappointing a member to the Valley Community Service Board for a three-year term ending June the 30th, 2021. Mr. Hamp?
Mr. Dan Sullivan is presented for your consideration.
And he's been serving, right?
Correct.
Is there any questions? Is there a motion to make the appointment?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries 5-0. Item 10C is to consider appointing two candidates to the Disability Aging Board for Independence, each for an unexpired four-year term ending June the 30th, 2021. Mr. Hamp?
Ms. Chrissy Johnson, whom is the CEO for Vector Industries, and Mr. Raymond LaFlock is presented, or, excuse me, are presented for your consideration.
Is there any questions, Mr. Hamp? Is there a motion to make these appointments? Thank you, Mr. Marks is our second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries 5-0. We'll skip to number 12. Item 12 is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating funds for certain fiscal year 2018 expenditures previously appointed in accordance with ordinance 27, or 27, 2017-28, City of Waynesboro Annual Appropriation Ordinance encumbrance rollover to a reserve for a fiscal year 2018 encumbrance. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the reappropriation is essentially for those goods or services that we either have on an existing purchase order or under contract, and that are funded by revenues generated in fiscal year 18, and then would be in reserve for fiscal year 19.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Is there any questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Item 13A is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating an innovation challenge grant in the amount of $37,125 to the school funds to be used to operate the regional ABE and correction classes. Mr. Hamp?
These are federal pass-through funds.
Is there any questions, Mr. Hamp? If not, is there a motion to introduce?
So.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Item 13B is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a career and technical education program grant in the amount of $800 to the school funds to be used for national health science for Waynesboro High School students. Mr. Hamp?
Also pass-through federal funds.
Any questions, Mr. Hamp? Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Item 14 is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a portion of the capital projects committed, equipment replacement, and facility maintenance reserves, and the amount of $30,000 to the capital projects fund to be used for engineering services related to the Natural Resource Damage Assessment, NERDA, project. Mr. Hamp?
So I think the title of the ordinance speaks for itself, unless there are questions.
Any questions, Mr. Hamp? If not, is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Item 15, communications correspondence and calendar.
I don't have anything this evening, sir.
All right, thank you. Item 16, a citizen's comment, period.
No one has signed up to speak.
Then, no need for a closed meeting tonight?
Not tonight, sir.
Is there a motion to adjourn, then?
So moved.
All right, then, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.